All right, so call to order at seven oh one now. How quickly time flies. And I have this. Oh, here it is.
Yeah. Saving paper.
Over to the other side for roll call.
Trustee here, trustee Gras, here. Trustee Bird. And trustee Dally, trustee Hake, trustee Shaw.
Here.
I'd like to invite everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you.
Any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Um, anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? And that'll move us to approval of the board meeting minutes from July oh, July eighteenth last month. Ally, thank you for the minutes. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes. I saw, thank you, Janie. Second from Jenny. This is a roll call.
Right. Trustee Grasiana, I'm trustee Dally, or trustee Hake, I'm trustee Graylin, I'm trustee Shaw.
I. Okay. So before we move on, there is an important addition. So believe it or not, last month, we had Adam Simon representing our new legal firm, Hansel and Glink, Glick, Glick.
Link.
Glink. Again, right. Um, and he went through Oma and FOIA. There has been a fourth acceptable reason for trustees to attend remotely that was approved between that meeting and today.
The legislature is busy.
Yeah. Yeah. So um, I, I don't have it memorized, but Renee, if you do, please feel free. Uh, we spoke, I spoke to Julie over text. An unexpected childcare obligation. So personal illness or disability, employment purposes, or the business of the public body. So library business takes you out of town for some reason. A family or other emergency. And number four, an unexpected childcare obligation. So as Renee mentioned, this is self-governing in terms of, you know, there's no library police. Um, but for the benefit of the public, and I think for the benefit of our board, to extent that you can be here in person, that would be very helpful. And in the event that you can't, um, you know, understood, I think people are somewhat familiar with, we have to have a physical forum present of the board, so minimum four. And then we can vote to approve anyone to come in who's absent because of one of those four reasons. So technology wins. Any other comments or questions about that? Okay.
Um, library director report. Great. Well, hello, everybody. Happy August.
Yes.
Um, wow. Um, so this month's narrative is one page longer than normal. Um, and that is on behalf of the amazing staff and their incredible work, um, as always. But um, as my review has shown, as staff comments have shown, a lot of work has been happening these last several months. And I think the last couple of months specifically have shown that uh, there's a lot of various need and staff at all levels are helping with addressing that need, whether it's hiring Marina Dove, who is our brand of new youth associate, or our library associate, whether it is creating a new webpage to promote our learning garden as we have, um, whether it is uh, purchasing and ordering and setting up a new computer when one has broken, another one has broken, um, which Martha has done. Um, so as we continue to uh, address needs, obviously unexpected things come up. Um, and so I just want to acknowledge the incredible work that staff have done to continue moving the library along in our areas of um, operation. And so um, while I could cover more about the narrative, I invite you to read through it. Um, I actually want to focus on statistics this month. Now, um, as I've said in previous months, our statistics could benefit from a refresh in terms of how they are presented to you. But even in the current presentation of that, um, there are several statistics I want to highlight that show people are back in the library. Um, we are, and I especially want to identify section six, um, which is related to the three-year circulation counts and the three-year visit counts. Um, last month, uh, we saw um, the highest circulation that we have seen um, in the last three years. So that's the highest dot across all the last three years, which I am really um, proud of the staff for, and that's, you know, anywhere from promoting our materials in displays to support programming, our incredible digital collections that continue to exceed circulation. Um, summer is always a busy time for public libraries because schools are out, families are around, and family attendance at programming and circulation of our youth services collections drives public library circulation numbers and visits. It just does. You see that across the board in public libraries. And we have so many families in the community that I'm just really proud to say that we um, have had a great month across the board. Um, our visits uh, are pretty similar to last month, too. Um, and what I want to highlight is that our program attendance um, nearly surpassed our three-year highest number. Um, but with regards to our outreach and programming, I'm just really proud to see that. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention, too, is we are seeing more traffic on our website. And that's without really any evaluation or redesign of our website. There is more attention paid to our communication um, across all of our channels. But um, we are working as a team, Martha, Jill, and I, to really um, focus our efforts to get communication out there on a regular basis um, and keep that content updated um, so that people are going there for their resources. Um, another thing I wanted to highlight, too, in our statistics is that um, we continue to see um, our database usage pretty high. Um, I should have posted, I should have printed this in color because otherwise you wouldn't be able to see um, that ProQuest um, is a database that has gotten a huge amount of usage for the last three months. Um, and that is that larger uh, dark color in those last three bars. Um, and so that's a resource that we pay for um, and provide free to our library users. Um, and uh, I'm really excited to show that um, because oftentimes libraries may not always see database usage or online resource usage because of lack of awareness of these great resources that we have. So we really have to promote to say, hey, did you know we pay for these subscriptions so that you can have this free? Um, so whoever it is, they are finding, they are finding it, and there is sustained use across the last three months, which is really exciting.
Renee, what is in ProQuest?
That is a great question, and I'm wondering if Katie or Martha would be able to answer that.
Uh, it's US major database, which is a uh, database that we, where we get access to major news publications like Wall Street Journal, New York Times, basically anything with that, they all access the articles through the same base.
And is it something that we purchased in the last few months?
No.
We've had it for like a year or two.
Possibly.
But um, yeah.
What I will say is I think we promoted it in one of our newsletters. Um, we talked about, um, yeah, we talked about how you can download magazines um, for free through the library. And I remember you messaged me, Bonnie, after that article went out, we got a couple of calls from the community. I remember being on desk. So I think there's a correlation there, um, and I'm really excited to see that. So that helps us get um, uh, more usage for the price that we pay. So um, that is a great resource for the library. Um, there will be other updates about staffing later. Um, but as uh, as I just wanted to say, I'm um, just really impressed with uh, this summer and all the levels of um, staff contributions to programming. We had a really engaging um, silly sidewalk obstacle course across our library. I don't know if you were walking around our building during that time where we had it, but we had intergenerational participation of people who followed these little activities around the building on our sidewalks, and then they scanned a QR code and participated in a giveaway. And just with that scanning of the bar of the QR code, we had over a hundred participants. And I know more that many more than a hundred participants uh, stayed active and enjoyed that. And um, Mary Weber, um, one of our youth librarian, uh, staff members in the children's department, um, did a great job putting that together. Um, and yes, I'd be happy to answer any questions about um, the report or the statistics. Yes.
Kudos to all the others that go into supporting that. Uh, the one thing that's always been a key interest to me, especially going back to the before times, it seems like some of our certain are getting to was um, the digital penetration. I see that's about twenty-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Here for take.
Mm-hmm.
Um, be interested to see what that was back
Sure, um, I certainly could get those numbers for you and send that out to you directly.
Yeah, it's just not, it's a footnote for next month, even for the government, it's probably sort of a bear. Also, interesting though, it's kind of flatline, right? It's the same, you know, it's a flat line, right? You can see it's super low, it's serious, and it's on quite some more recent months, right?
Right, and I think that speaks to before I started, even the staff's ability to promote our digital collections during the pandemic, and then people's continued interest in using them because it hasn't gone down now that our building is up or open again. Um, we're seeing that steady usage. I'll add to, um, when we receive our per capita grant every year, a significant, we have a meeting and we discuss, you know, how that money is delegated. You know, we ask for it for specific areas. Um, a majority, a vast majority of that funding is to support adding additional copies of our most popular materials requested on our digital collection. So um, Anna Fivehouse is one of the librarians and manages all of uh, the digital collections. And she can see the hold list. That is quite long, admittedly, for those of you that download ebooks and audiobooks. Um, and we can see the ones that have the highest or the largest ratios. And we put that funding directly to the ones that our patrons are asking for. So we're hoping to address some of that. So clearly, our ebook users are continuing to be, and are, it's, it's a very popular service. So it's not anything we're going to be reducing funding to anytime soon.
So is there a ratio, Renee, that triggers staying with books? Because sometimes I'll, I'll go online and people will say, okay, you are twenty-six in line, you have six copies, but your library has purchased, I think, a copy. Yeah.
Yes.
What, what triggered that? Is it a ratio that you want that?
So the adding of another copy, it is a ratio. So we can see how many copies we own and how many Lake Bluff patrons requested for that. And so that list, I think, comes out weekly, if I'm not mistaken, or Anna can go in anytime. Yep, and she's regularly in there because of the high demand of ebook holds. Um, and so that's how that money is spent. So we spend more money on our digital collections than we have in our budget. In fact, without the per capita grant, we wouldn't be able to address the holds.
And so when the, the library purchases that extra copy, does it, does it push like, well, patron higher up the scale because of the technical copy?
Yes.
Of extra copies for everybody that's looking for that?
No, they're just for Lake Bluff patrons. Yep. Yeah, good question. So I'm going to make a note for Matt and then to share with the rest of this, uh, the board, um, looking back at are you looking specifically for like ebook circulation or just um, the databases or?
I think it's, I think it's important to maintain consistency. So whatever, whatever is defined as digital server.
Then it would be our ebooks and e-audiobooks. I will say that I don't know how we kept statistics back then, and I don't know if we had, because I know that Anna and others created this dashboard within the last several years to show you all our circuit. So hopefully, we have an apples-to-apples comparison. If not, um, I'll work with Martha to try and get it.
I recall just looking back at the three-year graphs when I joined, uh, some of the historical ones, if the, the adult circulation of the digital, like, with the inverted.
Yeah. Yep. Absolutely, yeah, and I know Martha, you were about to say something.
Yeah, we can get that.
Perfect. I think you said two thousand eighteen and nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
March of two thousand twenty.
Yeah.
Rumor.
Yeah. So much life lived, absolutely. Thank you for those questions. Any others? Thank you.
Okay, great. So then, then we move on the agenda to item number eight, committee reports. Two committees met, um, finance and technology. I'll turn it over to our duly newly elected chair for finance, Bill Hayes.
Yeah. It's one step forward. Um, so um, a couple of things, and I know we're going to talk a little bit about some of these on the agenda. But one of the budget, the, the building maintenance, which we're already at the same, uh, three of the first three months. And it's sort of brought up that there's another thing that's within the building then. Um, don't mean it blanked it or not, I'm saying, uh, all went on with, when it happened. So uh, we discussed the option of taking some of the money you have in reserve um, to handles for these, and also have somebody who can manage uh, these things that, that need given down, that take away from Renee's uh, function of the library. So that was something that we, we discussed, and I'll be talking about that a little bit later as far as um, I felt room for.
Yep, in new business, we will.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, we also, uh, talked about photo copies, which I know that's in the, in there. And we looked at a couple of proposals that I'm, that's, that time related to an updated possible part of mine, so we'll go for that. Then uh, we also talked about combining the finance and the tech groups into one since one, the personnel in those groups are the same. And typically, anything that we can talk about, technology, some type of money, so, so, deep sort of, maybe life. And so that's going to go through by also to, to check that out. Uh, there was something else we discussed.
And Bill, I'll just add, you know, in my work experience, I'll look at different companies, whether it's a healthcare provider group or a pharmaceutical company, a lot of times IT reported into finance anyway. So I think it just may further build efficiencies for those two committees to be combined together. Um, I, I would say the other thing is I would call it the finance and IT committee, not just finance, because I think there, that you remember, not there wasn't an IT committee. We proposed one being added, it's been added. Um, so I think in order to make sure IT doesn't fall by the wayside, that the board does have, you know, some intentional proactivity around technology for the library, I would recommend making sure the title and the goals cover both.
So then that is the recommendation of the committees. And then so um, that recommendation will go to the bylaws committee, bylaws and policy committee for a review of the governance policy. And so in order to make that change, we have to, um, the board would have to review that at a policy level, make those changes, and then bring it back to the board for voting.
Yep.
And the last item, uh, that we talked through, I think, the security cameras. And so, uh, Renee, now there's the different libraries and people use, and everybody is using different people, different companies. So it's only two libraries that use the same, same group. So um, a little bit more research on that as to what the best solution is for us. But that's, I mean, we're willing to go for that as well. And then cameras, but yeah, but someone that they, that one of you is moving by, and I made it, telling security cameras itself is something I have a bunch of favorites, so I'll do. But I had a whole kind of a person, I think, that I asked. They have to read it all, that, that was.
Um, no, it's quite long. Um, and in addition to the ten-ish vendors that I have on that list from the other rails libraries, our technology services or our computer services vendor, CBI, also provides security cameras. So when we get to the point of um, whether assessing if an RFP, a request for proposal, is necessary, um, and deciding the scope of the security camera or the security system that we purchased or want to purchase, um, then we can see, you know, certainly invite any of those vendors to submit um, a proposal to that RFP. Um, but I think we have a great starting list to go for.
Are we required to submit RFPs? Or did?
Only if the purchase is above twenty thousand dollars.
Yes. And so I, I mentioned that with regards to security cameras, knowing that it's possible. I don't, I don't know, I haven't even started that research. But if we want any additional security system with the cameras, because we talked about this at a previous meeting, we don't currently have a security system for the building itself. Um, the building and grounds committee would assess that if that is a need and prioritize that for the request for proposal. Um, so it could be, it could be, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, so if there was a quote-unquote, say perimeter beach breach, beach, wishful thinking, um, when the building is empty, you know, window gets smashed and somebody comes in or that somebody decides to come through a door for some reason, I don't know, we wouldn't know it until people showed up on site the next day. So that's like the maybe additional security that we might want to have, if it's, you know, buy one, get one free, security cameras and what have you. So just, that's, that's um, to be good.
I have one last thing, and that was something Renee had sent out to, uh, maybe sent out to another group of that, the proportional share of the person who pocketed the place from Texas. Got to look into that.
Yes, and so um, I learned a lot at Director's University. And one of the things that I learned was that um, some library directors, after having attended Director's University, learn about something called PPRT, or Personal Property Replacement Tax. And um, in some cases, those directors that have gone to the university and come back to their communities, they've reached out to their village administrator or their county clerk's office. And because of this state statute, they realize that they have, they were owed an amount of, a portion of this tax since the date of the statute and predating in nineteen seventy-eight. Our library levied prior to the date of nineteen seventy-eight, so that makes us eligible for PPRT. The question is, are we getting that as part of our monthly dispersment? Or not monthly, but semi-regular dispersments of our tax payments? And so um, I've already emailed Drew about this, and he said, I'll look into it. Um, it may depend on the village, you know, in the library. It does, because it depends on when that library was built originally. Um, but there were stories of these library directors going to and learning about PPRT and going back to their communities and being issued larger checks um, from their county clerk's departments because of the oversight of this tax not being dispersed to them. I have high aspirations. Um, and I'm, uh, I haven't heard from Drew yet, he's still working on it. But I did tell them that I was also hoping to reach out to the county clerk's office. Um, and so uh, yeah, more uh, more information. I would love to be able to share with you a very happy update about that. So more to come, fingers crossed. Not that I'm hoping for oversight, that's not what I'm saying, but I, you know, if there was.
Be nice when.
Yeah. Yeah. Say that again? No, um, I, I don't, I don't. All I know is that every year, there's a portion, so in it, in it stands in perpetuity. So it goes all the way from nineteen seventy-six until current year and forth, and forthright. So um, yeah, I, I hope to bring updates back to one of the many, many things I learned, and it was a great experience.
Those are the, uh, Duke, you can make.
No, no, I think you covered both the finance and the technology discussion. We had, you know, separate agenda, we wrapped one meeting, opened the second, et cetera. So that, that covers every, I'm, I'm sorry, the one thing. So it, it's been a bit of an ongoing discussion. I think it happened, there was some discussion last month at our monthly board meeting, and then yesterday at the finance meeting about our fund balance, which many of you will remember is north of four hundred thousand. Right, it's built up over time. Um, and what kind of interest rate is it earning? Is it really working as far as it should be? Or could be? So um, I did reach out to Bettina to ask more about, okay, where exactly does that money sit? What kind of weight is it earning? And could we do better? In true Bettina style, gold star, she responded right away before the end of business day. So and, and I think this is going to, when I read her answer, it was like, oh, okay, I think we did talk about this with our previous library director as well. So the library's funds are held in Illinois, in an Illinois funds account. So it's like a whole bunch of bonds and other things. It's held by the Illinois State Treasurer, and there's a daily interest rate. The daily interest rate for the month of August has exceeded five point four percent. So as Bettina then went on to say, this rate's certainly better than any CD I've seen in the last number of years. It also provides you a great amount of liquidity at the same time that you're earning a great rate. So she said, you know, I don't know if you can do any better, basically. But five point four.
Five.
Five point four.
Yeah, we call it, we spoke, we spoke about this before, and it's a money market.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But which two hundred years ago, that sense of risk with the fact states.
Right, it's a low risk, pretty generous reward, pretty accessible account. So I think the only thing that's still open is, do we want to crack? Maybe crack the amount into two separate funds? And specifically designate one of them as, this is our capital reserve? So I know, Renee, you, you've brought up that.
I'm happy to give a little more context about that, too. Um, it came up in the meeting. Um,
In the Director's University?
Yes, um, so at Director's University, I've had, I had many opportunities for conversations with other libraries about what you do and what you do about your finances. And um, we've had specific lectures on um, uh, finance and budgeting. There was almost a full day on it. And because we are a government institution, we by law are allowed to have separate, an actually separate fund um, that is completely separate from our, what I'm going to call our checking account. We have a very flush checking account, and that is the money market. That is the Illinois Library Funds Account that gives us the high um, interest rate. And it's very liquid. We can, I mean, I literally transfer money from that account to pay our bills, you know, twice monthly. And so um, that said, we don't have necessarily any money set aside from that large amount of fund balance. We don't have, let, let's say, the library itself doesn't have direction from the board about how that extra money is planned for and spent. And so there are many libraries that have separate capital reserved, capital reserve funds that specifically go to building and grounds investments, and perhaps a capital res, planning document that identifies the five, ten, fifteen-year needs of the building and sets aside. And sets aside money to address those needs in a strategic, in a strategic way. And so um. You know, one of the conversations we had was with the various needs that we see in the organization. Technology, personnel, um, building and grounds being the three that I identified as what I think are the priority right now. Um, what direction or what guidance does the board have for? What to do with that fund balance? And so I think getting back to Bonnie's. Um, the proposal or explanation, is there something to discuss either at the finance committee or the larger board itself? About strategic planning for that fund balance now that it has. Come back to essentially forty percent of the library's operating budget, which is a healthy amount for fun balance. There are experiences in other counties such as Cook County that have um, received. Uh, notice from their local government that they are going to be late with tax dispersments. Cook County is going to be several months late issuing tax payments um. To state and local governments, which means that libraries in Cook County have to flow payments without that cash flow coming in. Um, for several months later than they're supposed to receive it. You know, we are very lucky. That's not happened to us in Lake County. Um, but should we get in a position? Where that should happen, our fund balance would be able to address that, but we don't have anything else. And so. Just a question, observation to the board about our finances and not anything that could be decided or. But I'm discussed and decided today. This is a a bigger strategic discussion um about the financial. Uh, future history of the of the library.
So my thinking is we take it as a um, agenda item for the next finance meeting in September. September twenty first, already known. Rock on. That's right. Matt and I'll take it up. Okay. Hmm, thank you. And actually, we did have a charm committee meet met today.
Yeah, yes, it wasn't prepared for the, yeah.
Would you like to give an update?
Oh, sure. Um, thank you to everyone who participated and provided their feedback, all staff and trustee. Um, so it's very helpful and I think it gives us um. A lot to move to. Um, so we also thank you to Renee for her self review. It was very thorough and um, I think it was. Um, however, I had the chance to read it and I think it was very enlightening for all. So we really appreciate your candor and. Um, so we are talking about the next steps in our process for synthesizing the information. And creating a form that we can share with Renee so that we can also share the comments with her as well. Um, and uh, so we're just working out the next steps since this is our first. Time using this a new format. Um, so we met today and talked about how we're gonna create a form for our, the meeting that we're gonna have with Renee. So we're also gonna have a follow up meeting. To finalize the report. Thank you for your participation. Oh, and if any, there's the form is still open, so if anyone, all staff or um. Or trustees that haven't been able to submit their forms, that would be great. It's still open and available. It's still, it's definitely responding.
I just wanna add a thanks to all of you for any and all feedback. Um, as a former educator, I'm so committed to learning and process improving and. Every year is a new year, so um, and especially my first six, seven months or so. Lots to grow, lots to grow. So thank you all for the process and committing to it. Really appreciate it.
Well, thanks for all your work and thank you for your honesty.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You're welcome. And right back at you, Jenny. It's just. A lot of input and you did a great job.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other committee comments? So we'll move on to the July financial reports.
Okay, so what you have before you is um. I don't know, I feel like this is the first time I've gotten the revenue and expenditure report officially a hundred percent correct. With all of the the various formatting issues, how many pages did it print and all of that. So. Just a little mini celebration for myself there. Um, so what you have before you is the revenue expenditures for um, the month of May. And there are a couple of things I do wanna highlight, just a few. Um, property tax revenue, we are the opposite of Cook County. We are receiving our tax dispersments. We are already at fifty one percent, almost fifty two percent received. Um, so this is great and I I wanna check with Bettina, but I would say probably ahead of um, schedule. I was gonna ask you, Bill, if you thought.
Well, because the next payments are gonna be uh.
Couple of months, yeah.
Set up, sorry, correct. So. If people pay fifty percent, fifty percent of that people wrote with it in the.
Yes, it really is. So that's great. Um, I do want to uh, mention. That um, there are a couple of lines in the revenue that are a little higher than expected at this time of year, work quarter into the budget year. And so um, what you see in our interest earnings, it's almost forty percent um, of our projected. Interest earnings and that's from the money market that we just discussed. Um, and in the finance committee last year, we specifically. Um, I think under uh, estimated, um, we wanted to be conservative, right? Um, with the amount of interest that we might receive from our money market fund. And so I'm very happy to report that. As Bonnie said, there was even a a five percent, five point four.
Five point four on average every day in August.
And she compared that with three percent in October?
Yeah, I just, I just said, all right, so if it's been five point five four now. Bettina provided the link. I said, let me check and see what it was a year ago. And so.
Great news.
October of twenty two twenty two, which would be less than a full year ago, it was three point oh. Yeah.
That's, that's great for the library.
Yeah.
Um, and in general, other things for the revenue, um. Uh, passports were also a little bit higher than um. Uh, the, the quarter, uh, thirty one percent of what we expect to receive um, for the year.
Renee, I think all the passports are available, brand new passports that people do, what they renew as well.
Um, so I'm gonna defer that question to Martha.
Um, so we aren't allowed to handle um, the renewals that's a separate form. So we are handling passport applications for um. Do adult passports and also any minors um, under the age of. Fifteen, they treat like a brand new passport application. Um, and also if like you had a passport when you were a minor and you're now an adult, that they also treat like a new application for to be qualified for. Other like this scenarios.
If you maybe might continue to go outside, so uh, or uh.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. We have, you're still continuing to see what I can. Um, I think September is wanting to be. That I I'm not sure. That was last year. It was when they really started to rocket up um, in terms of our um, the one that request. So. And then just to see what will come.
Okay, I'm there too. Thank you so much.
That that's fine when you're traveling and you've got, you've got, the children have got the passports or they're with the store and they throw it out.
In the expenditure list, um, I just wanna highlight um, everything that you heard Bill say. We're about fifty percent spent of our building in um. Maintenance and grounds funds of the budgeted um, building and grounds um. Uh, budget. Um, we are also on track with um, our computer services, even though it's looking high right now. We're only a quarter in. Um, that's just how the contract is paid out um, to CBI. Um, so we are on target with uh, our agreement there. Um, as and as you saw in my proposal about the copier, we have had to pay a lot more lately with copier maintenance because of the value of our machine is decreased over time. And because of that, you see that our copier maintenance and supplies is already fifty four percent spent. So. Um, just some context to bring that one home for you in terms of how the spending is actually happening. Um, staff are doing a great job spending in their materials lines. Um, we're gonna. Sooner than perhaps they are interested in, start talking about budgeting for next year and talk about how budgeting is spent this year and make plans for adjustments for next year, but. Um, yeah, we're, we're looking ahead to the fall to be able to start planning for next fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yeah, man.
I mean, do you have a question?
Yes.
In the, uh, but it's in the next page, the grants.
Oh, yes, this, yes, so.
The, this.
That's.
Unless you wanted to um. Kinda close this out first and then.
Is this the check dispersment?
No, this is.
Oh, and I can take that question.
Okay, so my question, so everyone can be clear at some point. Renee, Renee, um, you know, so we have the kind of operating budget and then there's a section on grants. It's sort of page three. The first thing says library grants and gifts fund.
Zero eight two.
And if you go down, there's a restricted donation that is recorded in the month of July of twenty four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I just was asking Renee to speak to.
Yes, right. So um, the friends of the library meet multiple times a year and to prepare for those meetings. Um, Jul- uh, Janie was at our July meeting. Um, you know, the staff get together and suggest um. Potential donation requests, ideas for the library, anything from funding the program supplies. Um, for the parade, which they did this year, to funding a movie event at Fortins, which we recently did at a Kanto. Um. And uh, staff assess those needs and then put together a proposal for the friends to consider at their meeting. We present that proposal, we leave the meeting and then the friends discuss and vote on that. And so um, since I started, we've discussed here and also with staff. The bubbling effect on the tables that are on the first and second floor. There isn't um, money allocated in this year's budget to address that. And so um, in discussing with the former president of the friends, she's no longer, she's since resigned. Um, she said that there could be support for the friends to support those. Um, that furniture cost. And so um, in working with LFI, the library's furniture company that um. Helps design the strobe room and in a desire to create that design aesthetic consistent with the strobe room out into the rest of the library. The proposal was for a combination of tables and chairs. Um, to meet the design needs of the strobe room and match. So the power tables um, in the chairs. And so um, that proposal was submitted to the friends with um, great gusto. Uh, in fact, we did not ask for this amount, this amount right away, as Jan- Janie will remember. Um, it was a smaller amount, um, but then they said, well, we have this money that we have in our. Their fund balance and they were interested in supporting more. So then I revised the proposal, sent it back to them. And they are able to cover the cost of all of the tables and all of the chairs. And so um. The order has not been sent yet because we're receiving um. Quotes on reupholstering our existing chairs to compare the pricing. Um, but we did receive the check from the friends. Um, who are more than happy to pay the full cost of the power tables and chairs. At uh, a total amount of twenty four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And we also received our per capita grant. You could see right above it, eight thousand two hundred and eighty three. Um, that happened this month, too. Thanks, no, thank you.
All right, so um, with the financial reports then. We looking for a. Motion to approve the July revenue and expense report. So, Janie, thank you. I have a second. Matt? And this is money, so we do roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee George.
I'm trustee Brown.
Hi, trustee Dowling.
Hi.
Very much. Awesome. Okay, now we're on to checks.
I don't have much to highlight except that there's a couple of large um, payments to Gary Levin. And as you may remember, he is our. Um, building and maintenance service. So um, he's not on payroll here, but we use him. He covers a lot of great work for the library. The other piece I wanted to highlight is um. Uh, I've worked with an electrician to assess um, some important. Several safety related electrical needs of the library building. Um, and in fact, he assessed the whole building and identified other things that can wait and go to the building and grounds committee for prioritization. Um, but there are several items that we are moving forward with. Um, and so he required uh, that deposit and um. His name is Rick and uh, he comes very highly recommended also by Gary. And so um, uh, this is just for that initial electrical work. Um, for the library and some of that, I know I sent the itemized list to the building and grounds committee of all the things that he assessed. Um, but the majority of this work that I'm, that we are paying for, for the fifty percent deposit is exterior lighting. Um. We are adding, we are replacing fixtures. There are several like, what I appreciate about his expertise is that we said, oh, this isn't even the right type of light for this space. You want. Um, a light that goes up and out. You don't wanna direct spotlight just down on the building. And so in many cases, as we've discussed, the safety issues for staff and the public. Um. There's going to be a great improvement to our lighting outside. Um, and we also have those um. The, the actual post lights throughout the space around the building. Um, there are several that are not secured on their cement concrete. That are um, could potentially fall over and be a safety risk and several of them are no longer um. Completely enclosed. They're supposed to be enclosed from the outside and you can tell they're not because there are a variety of bugs within them. So. Um, he is going to be inspecting each one of those, um, and cleaning those and addressing um, those light fixtures and so.
Ball and lights.
Yes. So that's what the three thousand one four two is. Happy to answer any other questions, too.
Oh, I know what else to ask for the. For the ones we're gonna put in. Um, have you decided on which fixtures?
So what, we're not even at that point yet, but um. We are, we basically signed an agreement for the work and he's committed to the amount and we'll be able to work with him to identify the actual fixture. Um, and so uh, I I have lots to share with the building and grounds committee. Um, but it will all be LED. Um, and also the timer, I didn't mention that, but we have a. A timer that is not as current as it could be and it actually has broken many times. Martha's smiling, I'm sorry. Um, she knows this timer intimately very well and the staff do too. Um, and it has been the cause of several issues with our lighting.
We're on an outdoor light?
All of our outdoor lights are on our timer system. And so we have three different systems for the different lights. And so um. The new system will be updated in a way that um, we are, will be able to change the time that we set on an app. It sounds wild. Um, no longer manually fix it. Um, but it will significantly reduce the amount of staff intervention needed. Um, and it'll, it'll, actually, his proposal said it will reduce the possibility of an electric shock. I don't know if you remember that particular one. Um, so it'll be safer, too.
This could be so boring.
I know. Strategic planning. Plans. Great improvements for the buildings.
Thanks, Renee. So I'm looking for an approval of the July monthly checks from. Fifteen thousand six ninety two through fifteen thousand seven twenty. Thank you, Janie. Second. Second by Matt. Money roll call vote.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee George.
I, trustee Brown.
I, trustee Dowling.
Or.
Hi.
Truman, I.
Okay, thank you. The July checks are approved. Moving on to new business. So scheduled regular board meetings, um. Because we're a small board. Um, if one or two people can't make. A board meeting and we know well in advance, and then you never know, something might come up and someone, you know, we, you think you can make it and you can't. There may indeed be a case in point today, Sandy. Um, so because that was sort of a known thing. I said, hey, why don't, and it's a conflict with community event at the Lake Buff Elementary School. Um, I had asked all of you if you would be able to meet on Wednesday, September twentieth, the third Wednesday rather than the third Tuesday. Um, many of you did get back and say, yes, you could. Renee has checked her schedule as well as this meeting room schedule. So it is all available and aligned. We do know that Bill will still be overseas and unavailable. Um, but uh, I, I looking for a motion to change our septemular, September board meeting from the third Tuesday to the third Wednesday.
Yes, third Tuesday, third Wednesday, or Tuesday.
No, the other way. The way round.
Third Tuesday to the third.
Great.
Great.
That's it. Thank you, Ally. Um, we'll do a voice phone, I think, it'll be okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hey, the ayes have it.
We'll make that change to our communication.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Uh, our next action is to vote for library closure on Friday, November seventeenth to support an in-service. I'm gonna ask Renee to provide just one or two comments and content to provide more context.
Yes. So last year was the first year in several years that the library came together as an organization and um, had a day of learning and professional development. Um, it was right before I started in January and um, feedback from staff was overwhelmingly positive. And the feedback that I remember from the board at the time was um, uh, in, in great support of taking a day for the staff to reflect and recharge and network and connect with each other. Um, lunches provided for staff that day on the day of in-service. And so um, we would like to propose that we do this again this year. Um, so it's typically uh, in November when we have this training, at least it was last year and previous years. Um, and so this is the third Friday, November seventeenth, um, which keeps with our third Friday of every month when we open the library at twelve for our staff days. So again, resuming in the fall will be closed the third Friday of every month to allow us as staff time to meet and convene and discuss um, important topics. So um, with that, I um, appreciate your consideration for um, closure of the full day um, for that day to support our staff in service.
I enthusiastically believe that we allow closure for in-service.
I have a quick clarifying comment. I, I, the, what happens in winter hours is that on the third Friday of every month, typically the library opens at noon.
Noon. So it's winter, it's fall and winter. So we start up again the um, the month of September through the month of May.
Yeah.
Um, and that's when we uh, open at noon on Fridays for staff days.
Um, so we have a, I just want to make sure that was clear. And this you're voting on is for a full closure like previous year for a, a full day in service. So thank you. Janie has um, motioned. Do I have a second? Thank you, Janie. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Steen? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. I have a quick question about that too. So typically in November, our board meeting gets moved from the third Tuesday of the month to the second because of Thanksgiving is often a conflict. Do, are we already on our calendar publicly on the website um, with our November meeting on Tuesday, the fourteen?
Yes.
Is that already in the approved calendar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I was gonna say, okay, just wanted to.
And that's a great note for me because next month you will be reviewing and approving the um, calendar for next year. So um, we'll make sure to be consistent with that too. Awesome.
One thing you'll know as well as on the public calendar, the recurring invite is showing up on the twenty-first.
I will change that. Thank you. Great.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to new business item C. Building maintenance needs with the library. Uh, I am gonna pass out a little something that um, I was inspired and Renee helped to edit and add to it. To describe what is known today and there may be other things that Renee or I missed that you're aware of in detail from Building and Grounds, et cetera. But just to give a flavor of what a part-time contracted role would cover. Um, so here, here it comes. Pass it around. Many of you from Building and Grounds will remember that for the Stro Room construction, I think we hired someone through Enberg Anderson. I think his name was Jason. Janie, does that ring a bell? Jason?
Jason.
True.
Yes. He was the onsite project manager for the Stro Room renovation.
Um. And this proposal um, for the Building and Grounds project manager. Um, you can have a read-through it. The priority projects um, would include security cameras, lighting upgrade and electrical work, mason and con- and concrete work. So again, I don't think we're gonna find someone who can do these things. But we're gonna find someone who can manage all of the contractors we need to bring in and bring our building up to up to snuff, for lack of a better term. Again, what has happened is delayed maintenance um, as well as um, eliminating roles in the library that had some specific building oversight responsibilities have kind of created this gap and this need for us to catch up on some maintenance and other improvements that need to be addressed for patron safety, for staff safety, et cetera. So this is a front and back document.
And so this was the recommendation of the Finance Committee um, to the board to consider the monetary implications of this position. And so before any scope of work is created for a contract or any RFP is created, obviously, this needs to go directly um, to the Building and Grounds to assess the projects, prioritize the projects. Um, the Finance Committee wanted to recommend to the board um, uh, the scope of this contract and identify that funding first. And so if the board considers and approves the funding request, then the work will go to the Building and Grounds Committee. So this is truly an inspirational document. Um, there's nothing uh, finalized here, but it does include everything that I've taken in these first six, seven, eight months. Um, and things that even came up recently with the electrical assessment. So um, uh, just acknowledging uh, I really, what I said last month is just appreciation for the the innovation of this idea to be able to consider this and address the needs of not just the position of director, but the needs of the library to get some work of this done in this nature. So thank you, Ronnie.
So you're, you're, you're very welcome. So what um, Finance Committee actually wanted to bring to the board was and it's, it's specified here in terms of the ten thousand dollars approval to spend from our fund balance, four hundred plus. Maybe four hundred and thirty, I think, might have been one of the last go-out figures from our previous fiscal year. Um, ten thousand dollars for a six-month contract role, part-time, as well as a forty thousand dollar um, earmarked for actually paying for the mason and masonry and the con- concrete work, the LED fixtures and the electrical work, the security camera installation, et cetera. Um, it's, it's a little bit of, you know, chicken egg, chicken egg. Well, how much is it gonna cost? Well, we don't know. Well, how to, you know, can we at least prove some money so we can get things started? And if we need more money, we'll come back to the board. Um, but this would allow us to get things rolling in terms of a job, a person, and then an amount of money to get going.
And I think it really speaks to the, for the fiscal year and the budgeting. Um, having this conversation in a public meeting is really helpful, I think, to give transparency to the community about how the funding is spent. The budget could easily be overspent to allocate for this, you know, if given the guidance. But to bring this decision to the board shows, in my opinion, the, the prioritized need and, and perhaps a, a collective agreement that this is how we want or the library is, should spend its funding. And so um, I really, again, really appreciate it.
So any questions or comments?
We have, uh, is there anyone that we have kind of in mind for this role? Do we have any issues to? And it's, it's.
No, but we could certainly reach out to Enberg Anderson and ask. Um, I also could reach out to Gary and see if he knows anybody in his field of work. Um, who. Right, right.
Actually, um, we had a couple of, uh, Dr. Pete, well, we had a couple of responses for our Pete, we did Stro.
Okay.
There were several in the area.
Yes, several different construction-type companies who might be able to provide this individual.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think there might also be someone who, you know, maybe someone who's retired in the community who has the expertise, maybe is a general contractor and wants to do it. I think CLC also has a degree, an associate's degree in construction management.
Interesting.
That could be another source of someone who is eager.
Yes.
Um, and interested in, in that stuff like this. So. Right. So um, can we? Vote. So can we vote? We were gonna vote all, we wanted to vote once because there's no reason to vote for the role. And for the forty thousand for the projects, they really need to go together.
And from a budgeting standpoint, even though they come out of separate lines, it, it's just um, it would be approval to overspend this year's
Right.
budget in those, i- i- at the end of the ledger, you know, the final total.
So I'm looking for a mo- a motion to approve that we um, allow Renee to overspend building maintenance by forty thousand dollars in this fiscal year. And uh, was the other one something services?
Ten thousand for contracted services.
And ten thousand for contracted services.
Awesome.
And we did, sorry, we did um, specify a contingency of approximately ten percent. And where is that? Is that different now?
Would that be something we can do that too?
Yeah, however you wanna handle it right now. Okay.
Nevermind.
Cause Bill and I recapped at the end of the finance meeting, we were like, okay, so it's ten and it's forty.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just then.
Yeah.
Then just disregard the ten percent contingency. Thank you for clarifying. Sorry to interrupt your motion.
Okay.
So there is.
There's, there's no, it, it was just, it's gonna be ten and the number will be for total of fifty. And they would be, have these plans come into fruition that become the same capital bank or the type of funding is gonna be ten thousand dollars and we've gotta come look at other, back and back who are doing the capital bank, the buildings grounds.
But this gives a good start.
Yeah, because there, there, there are things there and then also um, they, um, it's a problem that us to get it done and then import that into the bank on weekly basis, yes. I'm just, I'm here, which doesn't we not, not worry about it, but the same, someone else is taking care of it. Not having Renee to do more importance.
Just different.
Right.
Okay, so I have a, a motion from Janie for, thank you, Bill has seconded said motion. Um, Ally, are you good on what the motion is?
Yes, I have changed it from.
Great. Uh, it's money. We're gonna do a roll call.
Yep.
Correct.
I'm a trustee.
Aye.
I'm a trustee.
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 Bye.
I'm a trustee.
Bye.
Awesome.
Well, I just want to thank all of you for your leadership. Um, this has been a very busy six, eight months and without your work, it would have not, a lot of this has not been possible. And so um, thank you to this fantastically supportive board for identifying and supporting the needs of the library. Let's go.
Yeah. Staff and public copier machines.
Well, I've, I've given a lot of background. I talked about it at the last board meeting. Um, you have a front and back proposal in your board packet. Um, the Technology Committee saw more detail of the, from the individual vendors that submitted their quotes. Um, I provided background to say that um, with the incessant issues we've been experiencing with both staff and public copier machines, we are seeing a much more significant drain on resources and also staff time um, in addressing the needs of the print for the copiers. And I'd like to um, uh, just share a quick um, edit, uh, as I said in the third paragraph. Um, or was it the third paragraph? Anyway, the pub, oh, second paragraph. The public copier is eleven years old. Martha corrected me today and so I wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you very much for your historical accuracy. And um, uh, I think a, a lot of the reason why that we are experiencing what we are. Um, so I outlined my objectives in um, exploring a new leasing agreement for the library um, below. Um, I do find that uh, I think that a, a leasing agreement will be more financially viable for us in the long term than purchasing a copier outright and then also having to purchase a service agreement afterwards. Um, after, after talking to both ISBS and Impact, the two vendors. Um, a sign, a str- a significant amount of libraries lease. Um, just with the amount of new technology that comes out um, in terms of purchasing, it's just not a good uh, investment long-term um, to then have to redo it, um, repurchase all that afterwards. Also, Impact, for example, they request a hundred percent due. Um, and that would significantly affect, I think, our cash flow if we would have to pay fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars at the onset for a new copier. Um, I've outlined on the second side here, um, some of the features and how they compare between the two proposals. I really tried to get an apples-to-apples comparison, but unfortunately, because of the different vendors, they don't all carry the same equipment and the same types of models. So um, in talking to ISBS, after I talked to Impact, he quoted me with a similar um, model. Um, and his lease that he recommended was a thirty-six month lease. Um, I recognize that uh, my recommendation is the higher of the two. And so I just want to talk a little bit about that. Um, after the Finance Committee um, and some discussion, I was able to go back to Impact um, and negotiate a fixed rate for twenty-four months on our service contract. So um, that means that we would not experience any increases over twenty-four months. And I think for a technology vendor, um, and considering inflation right now is what we're experiencing, that's a really great deal. Um, staff at all levels, including myself, have experienced excellent customer service. Nate from Impact called me today um, twice and then I picked up the second time and he really wanted to make sure I had everything I needed for today's board meeting. He knew, um, he had every question answered. Um, he took my calls from vacation and we get this experience, this customer experience from all the levels of staff in the organization. You may remember we had um, copier issues on the day of the Stro Room event. Um, and I would say that their staff person was incredibly um, professional and respectful of everything that was going on and was able to manage the, his needs of addressing the copier while also um, respecting our needs of having to run the event during speeches. Um, I, I really think that you can't um, over count or over-consider high-quality customer service in this day and age. And also they are a local vendor and their response rate is sometimes within the hour. Um, we would not be able to get that element of um, response rate and they don't provide twenty-four-hour service um, at ISBS like they do at Impact. Like. Or, oh, thank you, yes.
Yeah, Impact, if you're on the highway heading north, their building is on. Yeah, Impact, if you're on the highway heading north, their building is on the right-hand side. If they've grown, I know their buildings, um, they put up a new building a couple of years ago. They're doing well.
One last thing I wanted to add, just also for, um, Bill and Bonnie. Um, after discussing the amount of toner that we would be receiving, it's free toner up to a certain amount of pages. And that number is based on our actual page count that Impact tracks automatically with our usage monthly. After discussing the page, um, allocation that we would be. Um, given for toner, um, he was able to increase our monthly average. Um, and I explained that we're printing board packets now. It's very different from the last three years. Our printing needs are going to go up because we're in person again. He increased it by a thousand black and white and, um, five hundred for color at the same rate. So he, he was very open to negotiating at multiple levels of the contracts or the service contract. So it's toner to allow us to print up to that amount.
So what, what we saw in the finance committee from Impact was like five sixty-five maybe a month? Five thirty-eight, what is your recollection?
Yes, and that, and that includes the increase. That includes the increase. Right, so he increased it by a thousand, black and white. For monthly average and only increased the rate monthly. Well, not two, it's for both machines. Correct, yes, this number is for both machines. Because of the increase of pages.
So free toner for. Um, black and white instead of thirty-five hundred, it's now up to forty-five hundred. Instead of fifteen hundred for color, it's now up to two thousand.
So, um, black and white is cheaper with ISBS, but the, a number of pages that we would be receiving at that rate is, um. Much less. And so what happens is, is that if this is an average and we can get billed quarterly, monthly, and this happens even now. Although we're paying for toner. Out right now because of the cost of the device, it's no longer included in our service contract. So it's free toner up to the amount of pages per month that they specify on the proposal and then anything more. Is that additional rate? But they don't cut you off after every month to say you owe this month. You can be billed. Monthly, you can be billed quarterly. For any additional toner that you might need that goes beyond that allocation.
Because that reflects the additional number of pages, which is only fifteen hundred, right?
It's tone, it's the cost of toner. For the pages. Correct. I don't know if I understand the question. Yes. Yes, forty-one-ish. But toner costs exceedingly more. Depending on the page, like depending on the type of printing. So like you could print at the library a word document. And that's very limited toner. You could also pay or print as we do. A lot of people come in and make full color copies of various things. And so we're being charged by the page, not by the ounce of toner that we're using. It's by page.
I think there's, there's another element to this proposal that finance committees talked about that we should put on the table now. Um, and that is to revise our charge for the community to print. A black and white page as well as a color page.
And can I give more context to that? I just learned, um, I think historically the library. Actually reduced the cost of copying, Martha, you were saying? So oftentimes, thank you, Martha, so helpful. And so oftentimes libraries will. Um, charge, but they're not charging for revenue. We can't do that as a public library. It's charging to recoup costs. So we have to assess the price at which we charge for copies. And so. Given a lot of factors, libraries have had to adjust their cost of copies over time. And so, given this feedback from two thousand and sixteen, um, I think maybe a dollar was an over, uh, adjustment. Um, but there could be a discussion at this level. It would have to start at the policy committee. Or a recommendation from the board to discuss at the policy committee, because this is related to our circulation policy. I'd love to provide, um, staff feedback as well. Um, we could help research what other libraries are charging and provide you with an overview of. Um, our neighbors, um, because I think since we are servicing. The neighborhood of not just Lake Bluff, but North Chicago, Lake Forest, it makes sense that if the library wants to consider adjusting. Um, the cost for copies to look at what our, our neighbors are doing as well.
And our current charge for color and current charge for black and white is?
Ten cents for black and white, thirty cents for color. So the goal would not be to recoup the cost of the whole machine. But of course, recoup the cost of, help recoup the cost of the toner expenses. Right, and I.
We discussed.
And I'd love to, um, while that motion isn't on the agenda tonight, I'd love to give back the board that research from the community, so. Everybody could be to have that information.
So can we put that on the agenda for September?
I'll work with Katie.
Your feedback on the community comparison. Can you also throw into that comparison? Kinko's or Staples or whatever.
Yes, we regularly get people from the community shocked at how affordable our copies are because of Kinko's and all of that. Yes, 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 yes. I, I'd love to share other feedback too about the rest of the proposal.
And other machines, it sounds like on, on here, they're still not comparable.
Yes, with actual libraries in our neighborhood with them running, um, ISBS promoted. To me, a Savin product, which I have verbal confirmation from multiple staff people here in this room. Um, that this library has had a history of not. Um, uh, working order with Savin products. Um, it's not been a, a really good experience. And so, um, there are local libraries such as Lake Forest, um. Uh, larger libraries as I, as I've addressed in the, um, proposal. That use the Kyocera currently in our, um, current, uh, service users, but. The product that ISBS wanted to push to me was a brand new item that has only been on the market for a month that I was a little concerned about. Putting into our building without a lot of, um. Market research. It has market research, that's not what I mean. Lived experience in a public library. Yes, and I, I didn't mention this yet, but training. Um, training was specifically highlighted by Impact Unlimited Training for Staff of the Life of the Machine. Um, that is not something that ISBS provides. Um, they provide initial training. Um, but if I wanted to, uh, bring in Impact to do a refresher course for everybody two years out. Uh, or a year out, um, I could do that at no cost.
I also think there's maybe, um, a point here about the Apple Air Printing, so. I've gotten fairly accustomed to printing documents from my phone. Um, how do, how does a patron of the library get their items printed today?
I would love to offer it up to, is Katie on the call? Um, Katie, do you have a microphone available?
Yes, I do.
I'd love to open it up to you to answer that question.
So, um, if someone is trying to print from their own device, um. We don't have a, uh, we don't have the same wireless ca- uh, printing capabilities that a lot of other libraries in the area have where. Patrons can, you know, forward, they can essentially forward an email or a document to a particular email address and have it show up for them to print. Um, or some other, uh, some other way for them to upload or print, uh, documents directly from their device. Right now, our workaround is to have patrons forward. Any documents or emails to the reference email account, um, and then the staff member. Will print it for them, uh, at the, uh, from the desk. Um, it works, but it's not, it's not ideal and the fact, um, and then. Especially if we have, uh, a patron who is send, who needs to print something that may have sensitive information on it, we need to make sure that we're going back and deleting the email and. Deleting any, uh, documents that may have been, or files that may have been downloaded to the computer, making sure that's not accessible. Um, so it's, it, if, it works, but there's definitely room for improvement.
I'll add too that if, um, someone has an Apple device. Um, and they have downloaded a format in Pages, this happened with Kathy Meyerhoff a few times. Sure, she had her notes, uh, in minutes in Pages and she emailed me. I can't view it, I can't print it, needs to be saved into a PDF. Oftentimes, we've had patrons come to the library to say. I have this document, I want to print it. They try to go on our computers, they log into their email, they open the file on Google Drive or wherever. But we have PCs and so they can't print that either. And so, um. But otherwise, the, you know, they go to our computers, you know, as Jenny was on the computer today, you know, logging in with your library card or guest pass. You know, finding your document and then sending it to the, to the, to print and then staff release it and then they pay us at the desk.
So if there, there's Apple Air Printing available, again, if you're on an Apple device, not if you're on a. I don't know, Adele, dating myself. Lenovo, I don't know. Um, but if you're on an Apple device, you can print without staff intervention, yes?
That's what I heard initially. I think that there's a lot of, we need to find out how it works. I mean, I don't have the instructions right now. I know Martha was doing some reading on it too, um, but that is a feature that's included in, in the equipment. And hopefully our setup will allow us to be able to use that. And so, um. You know, the other piece of that is at some point I would love to offer wireless printing. And that will need to be worked into the budget. So at the very least, if there's a device that gives us some capacity now. Um, that would be a benefit to us.
Any other questions on the copier? Again, I believe we have an eleven-year-old public copier. Shocking that it's still upright, in my opinion.
Which is why I moved so fast. I mean, last month is really why we experienced a lot of the issues.
And I think the staff copier is eight years old, maybe? Six, okay.
This staff copier regularly has, um, an image taped to it, um, affectionately given a nickname by staff. I think currently that image is of Dennis the Menace. Um, and so, uh, the staff copier has been a bit of a menace for a while now. It's one page of printing, so if you print it back and forth. Cause it's a toner. That's where they get ya.
All right, so Renee, it's, it's your recommendation move forward with the, uh, Impact. Proposal, is that correct?
It is, and I do think the fact that we've received a negotiated fixed rate for twenty-four months is positive, um. And I think, again, the quality of service that I've heard from every staff that's interacted with them is impeccable. Longer than five months or five years? Can you say it one more time?
Will they lock in the rate for longer than twenty-four months?
He was able to lock in for twenty-four months, but then told me that he doesn't anticipate. A growth like that contract actually says, a growth of no more than eight percent per year. Um, he wasn't able to give me any more than twenty-four months, given he was unsure of the. The industry. It's sixty, the rate is guaranteed for twenty-four months. So similar to our contract with, um. Sierra, our computer services vendor that provides our catalog. So we locked into a three-year contract. Bonnie, you all voted and Bonnie signed that. Um, and he agreed that he was not going to increase the cost of that service agreement across the three years. And that actually took him a long time to negotiate back and forth with me. Um, and so my understanding is that a lot of these specifically technology vendors. Have built-in increases to their service agreements every year. Um, and that, I don't know if that has been, um, properly budgeted for in our library's budget. Um, and given now inflation rate, I, I'm anticipating, as I've said a few times, that our agreements will continue, will continue to see increases. Across the board, whether it's building grounds or computers or technology. He had no such statement. He was not able to guarantee any level of, um. Fixed rate or.
You know, being a. Teacher at the high school level. Years of my career and having something that is, um. That is more dependable or more dependable machine and has quicker response in. When things do go south with the maintenance, I think this is. The extra money.
I'll add, we don't have a technology staff person in our organization, so. I would care maybe less about the response rate and the. I would care maybe less about the response rate and the customer service element. If we had a dedicated technology person that could manage it. But oftentimes, it's, oh, the copier is broken, did you do this, that, and the other? If we've done those three things, then we'll call Impact.
Do we have somebody who doesn't maybe does the tech?
Martha O'Hara is our Adult Services and Technology Manager. And that position, that that title was changed with your job description update. But it is one of many things that Martha is fantastically great at being responsible for.
Um, Bill, do you feel the original Impact proposal that we looked at?
Yeah. I mean, the difference, the difference is. The five eighty-nine to the six thirty is definitely additional pages based on the, if you both buy the black and white. You get forty dollars for each difference to.
So I guess the question is, is is our usage. An average of two thousand black and white and three thousand color pages? Or is the average usage, right, sorry, what was the the original from?
Original was thirteen-five hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
And that's what our monthly average is.
Oh, it is, so only five hundred to about, it's just sort of.
Because I said, we are now printing board packets, I'm anticipating increasing needs, yes. But Claire, any question?
And the, and the other thing we will discuss is that, if we do raise the price for the black and white color, that that will help.
Correct.
To support the.
Correct.
Yeah, we're also down, okay. Yeah, exactly, much of the, uh, or the thousand plus the period of, yeah. We're gonna, uh, let's take this closer to double, that's seventy, seven, seven, six hundred.
In terms of the revenue from copies?
No, annual.
Annual cost.
Four thousand to eight thousand.
Well, four thousand is the estimated amount of money.
Right.
For the repair of the copier, right? For the stove setting of the copier.
Yeah, it will be overspent, um because we've already had to pay. Like my last bill from Impact was over a thousand dollars just for uh um fixing the copier where it was out of um service for two weeks.
Um, so we own the copier in the building. And so we pay a higher rate for service. Because we're not paying a monthly to Impact today. Kind of releasing the machine instead in the proposal, and then therefore there's a monthly fee.
It'll need to be restructured, the budget will have to be restructured.
With what you put down in there, that you can't give a piece of well, it'd be sixteen thousand, that's just.
Times two.
Times two, so thirty-two thousand.
Plus a service agreement, because that's just the copier outright, you still, we still need a service.
This is just, again, it is for six hundred uh six months.
Yeah, I guess, I guess for me, I didn't expect the Impact proposal to go higher in price.
I know.
So that's part of why I'm like, oh, okay.
But part of that was because the numbers. Didn't include our recent, like, I had to print all of this today. Um, and any committee meeting that we're prepping, you know, any survey uh proposal we get from Angberg after that. So even just board meetings in person now is a significant cost to the library now that we're back in person.
Hey. So Renee, I think you're looking for a motion then to.
Think you are.
I am looking for, so.
But maybe there's more discussion.
But I think maybe there's more discussion needed and maybe what the, what the comment might be, can we sharpen the pencils again? We'll kick this to September. I I feel like maybe we're not going to get a vote on it today.
I mean, you could have a vote, it just may not be unanimous.
Oh, um, great is the need to get going.
Four to six weeks from the time that I call him, when we get the machine in. And then training. Which is why I turned it around in them.
For me, it's hard because the the depth of between ISBS and Impact is greater than twenty percent. So I feel like, you know, from a monthly standpoint, five fifteen to six thirty. Oh, it's not greater than twenty percent, my math's a little bad.
Months, and it's also um no. Uh. Right, no, no. Now, jump on the.
I would also say that it's almost. The cost that the library has spent on the purchasing of the devices when we bought them outright. That's money that's already been spent that we're not considering right now. And so we're really not, it's completely different consideration and completely different way of the budget being managed. I do think your comparison to. You know, the thirty-two thousand dollars for the outright cost of the machine. Plus the toner and service package. I mean, both vendors say ninety percent of their clients.
Release.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Smart way to do, if you acknowledge it, I think it's more the uh.
I just mean the startup cost.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, if you can guarantee instead of that. But the only thing that's really going to change year over year is going to be the price. I mean, it's, um, I guess, replace my parts, we got a lot of those.
But no, because this, so the cost monthly includes service, support, equipment, replacement, like. Everything for the printer, so if something breaks in the first twenty-four months. In the, in the whole sixty months, it's included, that's what this agreement is.
You don't, you don't have to pay for the replacement.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that 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 why the eight percent increase after the twenty-four months. The, if we find a photocopy of the, the impact, what are those increases that he can see, he's gonna see.
Personnel.
Yeah.
He's gonna see supplies, he's gonna see equipment, I guess I'm not advocating for the eight percent, but he said up to eight percent. We may see a year where it's not, um, but just coming at it from a service agreement. That's.
And really, I know, and I think this is the right way to go, but it's, it really comes down to is, is. The, you know, paying the extra um to get. You know, are we getting a much more superior machine than the Rico for the extra? Because even if you start taking the pages and stuff, the gap is actually getting a bit bigger, it's going. You know, just, yeah, it looks fast.
I'm very open to, after this discussion tonight, going back to Impact to see. If they could, again, sweeten the deal a little bit more, I don't mind negotiating. Um, they want to keep us as a client, they, we have been their client for at least. The amount of years that I think the staff copier was purchased.
Did you ask him about paper?
Yes, and he reviewed the ISBS contract and he says, he does not believe that that's how it's interpreted. The way that he interpreted it was relation to the toner. So this phrasing of forty, you know, forty-five hundred pages or three thousand pages. It's toner for printing those pages, it's not free paper.
Okay.
Um, he did also, I don't know if I mentioned this yet, um, he waived the shipping cost for the toner there and back. Um, that's something that ISBS did in their proposal, and I went back to him and I said, can you. Cover that cost, and he said, yep, we'll waive that. Open to any guidance from the board.
I think if I were to leverage me, I'd be able to, the, the page count or the fixed term, that might be where he has the most.
So suggestions?
Um. Um, I'm, I'm gonna go, go back, see if we can, one, I don't, fix the sixty months at that rate with no increases. Or see, yeah, um, if you can get a better rate than six thirty. Those would be the two things.
Mm hmm. So can we decrease the lease um length with, and then perhaps. Say, for example, a thirty-six month lease, but have that be a fixed rate? With no increase.
Or just see just.
Well, let's see, or I have heard that it's just increasing fixed rate here.
So rather than a twenty-four month fixed rate, yeah. Can he extend it to?
Thirty-six, forty-eight, anything.
Sixty, yeah.
A little more cost certainty for us.
Then you know that that's the change. Um, because that eight percent, it's an extra five hundred dollars every year. Um, it's a big number. In there, and and again, like I said, we've got under the train, but twenty-four cents service, you may have been a superior machine. Those all go into just.
So I'm sorry, I was writing down, um, extend the fixed rate for um cost certainty for us at, you know, thirty-six, forty-eight. I would ideally like the sixty months, and what was the other question, Bill?
The other one was, if, if.
Oh, yeah, reduce the actual monthly rate. Yeah.
I think that they've gone from five eighty-nine to six thirty, and that's, um. Uh, all they've really done there is just take in their former, take the black and white pages. And the color pages, if you add a thousand, I wonder if you've come up with like forty-one bucks. So if, if there's something you can do to, to get the right fact, or to. We'll keep them, we'll keep up with the two.
I will do.
Okay.
He said he would be willing to answer a call tonight, and I said, you know, it's okay. No, I mean, he's really eager, so I'm hopeful.
So can I make a suggestion for administrative simplicity, and so this doesn't maybe have to come back to the board?
Sort of say, if, 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 I said, you go, if, if you can get this right. And here, you go ahead and set a weight to next month, just to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That would still require a motion.
Yeah, so we still, we need a, we need a motion to kind of define the parameters that Renee's gonna negotiate toward. So we approve the um. Leasing of two new copiers with a duration of contract uh between this and this. A total monthly price no higher than whatever, and um. I think that would be it, because I think the other things, Bill, that you've, you've already identified. Maintain the flat pricing for a longer period of time, um. If that means we have to go to forty-eight months, that's okay. We know Renee prefers sixty months, so um. So, would anyone like to make a motion to provide um some. Parameters for. Uh, approving a proposal on leasing two copiers for the library.
From the impact network.
Right, we have to accept the proposal from that vendor, yeah.
From Impact.
Provided that. The fixed pricing. Having negotiated upwards for twenty-one months at the lease. Or. That the monthly price be brought down to. Say six hundred?
Yeah, five percent. Yeah, I like it. And it gives them a little more, I mean, again, the proposal Bill and I sort of looked at two nights ago. While the quantities were a little different, it was five eighty-nine, and again, I thought. We were gonna see something that was lower than five eighty-nine tonight.
But we did.
Increase the number of pages.
And we did receive free shipping, toning, toner that wasn't there before.
Those are all great things.
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Um, can we clarify the fixed rate term, what is the part, like, it's, right now, it sounds like either or, would be a satisfying factor?
Oh, you want to specify um. The fixed pricing for a certain number of months?
I heard it, I heard see an increase of the, of the fixed rate. Upwards to twenty-four months, so like. Anything, yeah, it's currently twenty-four months for the fixed rate, we want to see it increased beyond twenty-four months. And then it sounds like your motion is or, or. The monthly price we brought down.
That's your dish.
I'm not gonna share that or with Nate, I'm not, but we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Mm hmm. But I think what I hear is that the board's given approval for either. A longer runway for fixed pricing at six thirty, or it goes to six hundred, maybe we can get both.
That's what I'm gonna try to do.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'm very competitive internally, Bill, so that is just more motivation for me to get it.
All right. Would anyone like to second? Okay, um, your mom's money, so why don't we go ahead and do a roll call vote?
We shall.
I.
My secret, yeah, I'm a back, STW, or SDP.
Thank you, I never would have guessed that tonight we would have spent the most time on the copier.
I would have.
You would have.
I'm not a betting person, but I would have.
Right, we're up to item number eleven, library correspondence, Renee.
I really do like that we have this section, and in the future, what I'm planning on doing is including some of our um. New comment cards, um, we just, this past month, you saw in the narrative, um, that. Uh Jill redesigned the comment cards, we now have them at both the U Services Desk and the first floor desk. Um, and so this section will include some highlights or good suggestions from the community, um, we haven't had it in a while, so that will continue. Um, I'm, I'm glad to see it continue now. Um, and so the highlight sections of the correspondence section, um, a fantastic article um by Dan Dorfman, um. And it was uh printed in um the Pioneer Press as well as online, um, behind a paywall, but we managed to get you access to the article. Um, thank you to Bonnie and to um our foundation president Kathy Meyerhoff and to um Cal Stro's son, Mark Stro. For the interview, um, I received a message from the director at Lake Forest complimenting us on the great coverage of the story, and so, um. Really, any opportunity increased visibility of the organization in. Press like this, this is a lot of my background, you know, I'm gonna look for those as much as we can with. Great press releases written by our communication team, and so. This came together really fast, but um, I'm really glad that it did. I know.
I know, that was.
It's fine, I don't mind, um. And so, uh, the second one that I wanted to share is um actually a letter that received a lot of um recognition in the profession. Um, nationwide, um, former president Barack Obama issued a letter of thanks. To librarians um and library staff in this country, and. Why I wanted to include it in the board packet was to um express my thanks to staff. Um, and my, expressing my thanks to all of you for your leadership of the board. Um, and governing an organization as important as a public library that is, I think. Um, a, an important aspect of our democracy, a place where um. Conversation and freedom of thought and freedom of speech can happen, um, and also in light of um. A lot of strategic uh uh political initiatives to um. Dismantle public libraries, just frankly, um, and so we are lucky here in Lake Love to have the support of the community and of the board. Um, and so I just think that this letter is not just to the library staff, but to all of you. In your work as a board member, you help accomplish this for our community and for our country, so thank you. Um, and I forgot to make this copy in color, but if you've already reviewed the digital board packet, you will see. you will see, um, you all get a preview of the cover and inside cover of our fall newsletter, which I am exceptionally proud of, of the staff that put it together, um, and also of the team that helped plan programming, um. So banned books week, I think, is more important than ever before, as I outlined in my letter to the community. Um, we invite every board member to participate, we will have, um, fun activities, fun engaging activities, sorry, it's almost nine, um, engaging activities, uh, to promote the freedom of reading um, and, uh, the support of banned books week in the library. Um, and so more information will come out soon, um, but my hope with this letter from the director was to let the community know the state of libraries, the state of reading in this country. And we are thrilled to be able to be one of the libraries partnering with the state of Illinois and our state librarian, Alexi Junilius, who recently supported the new, um, legislation to ban book bans and, um, in the state of Illinois. There will be a program on October second, it'll be a virtual program, we invite all of you to attend. Um, and I think that it's going to be a very enlightening and informative prep program about, um, the state of book banning and the state of reading in this country, so I hope you'll join us. Um, and so with that, um, that is the end of the official correspondence section. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks Renee. Executive session. Where I was needing to do that today, okay. Any and all other business, so we have the fall twenty-three board of trustees engagement opportunities, your last, uh, attachment in your board packet tonight.
And what I thought I would do this time is, um, work with Jill to give a little scope to what attending one of these board, um, engagement opportunities might be like, so what is your role as a trustee? Um, what is our hope in your participating for the event? Um, we have some really fun and exciting events coming up this fall. Um, the birthday bash, which, which has been hosted for several years past. Um, we will be doing that again, if you are interested, um, Jill's contact information is below. Um, if you would like to, uh, help with trunk or treats, we will be participating in that again, uh, this year. And, um, staff are really excited to, um, be out there on the curb, on the sidewalk, um, on the day of Halloween, um, to, uh, trick or treat at the library, and so staff will be engaging the community in that very fun event. Um, and so what I'll be doing is providing these opportunities at a quarterly basis. And so, um, you know, and we'll be talking about this more, I think, in our community engagement committee meetings, you know, what, um, opportunities are there for the board and how can we develop your relationship to the community further? Um, and one of the ideas I remember talking to Bonnie or someone recently was, um, what's it like being a library board trustee, you know, when we get to that time again where we have a vacant position or two and, um, we are looking for people to volunteer to run, you know, there might be a promotional piece of material that you all help create to advertise and promote and engage with residents who might be potential board members. So I'm excited to, um, and, uh, continue the work of the community engagement committee in this fiscal year, and so if you are interested, let us know.
A quick question, so in previous years, the library staff um, volunteered slash, or we're, we're essentially working the birthday bash, doing certain things, um, to help the cross-village parks, village trustees, et cetera, parade committees, et cetera, everybody kind of contributed to, um, the birthday bash in different ways. What is it that a, that, that kind of the library is doing and what would a trustee do? Because I, you know, having recently done the, um, the auto show and we were in another place, the art, thank you. We're like the relay team for, uh, both of those events, what, what's, is there gonna be a table at the birthday bash?
So is Jill still on the call? Jill, would you be interested in talking about the library's slightly augmented role in this year's birthday bash?
Especially since that one is next month, let's just, we'll just focus on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I am still here, um, I'd be happy to talk to you about the birthday party, Renee and I were discussing this as of, was that today or yesterday? Um, we had discussed about the library's role in participating in this event and the amount that we participate as well, so um, for this year, Renee and I are the only staff members that will be working this event specifically. And then we are looking for board participation and friends' participation in helping us, um, run the event, um, the first year we, the friends had set up a table where they were handing out library material, like flyers and newsletters and stuff like that, they only got a handful of people, it's not really that kind of event. Um, people aren't really there to, uh, I don't know how to express this, um, it's just not that kind of flow of traffic with people that are attending the event, they're going in line, waiting for food, they're listening to loud music, and then there's the fireworks in the evening. Um, so mainly what we're looking for help with is helping with a little bit of the parking prior to the event, the event, I mean, the fireworks, and, um, handing out glow sticks and then helping people access the event itself as they're pulling in with their vehicle and handing out glow sticks at that point of contact as well.
Okay, so it's not like the book bike is there and that's where people come to you for information, it's more
Do you want to?
Circulating.
Right, and this will be my first birthday bash, and my understanding is that it is a community event, and so we want to encourage staff to attend just on their personal time if they want to, but it's not required. Um, and the staff involvement is gonna be minimal, um, and it will be paid staff, so me and um, Jill in this case. Um, but it, my understanding based on what you said, Jill, is that it is more of a recreational event as opposed to like an information gathering event, um, so would you say that that would be accurate, Jill?
Yes, thank you, I was having a hard time kind of describing, it's a party setting and having tables with informational materials hasn't been successful for us or the park district, because they had a table as well that first year and they didn't get much interaction.
And we're just one of many groups in the community that helped plan this, but I will say, the library's responsibility in the past has been, um, uh, how would you say, more than maybe say the other organizations in the planning group. And so we've tried to, I've worked with Jill this year to right-size her participation and leadership. She books all of the, the vendors, she gets the, well, not this year, the permits, but, um, there's a lot of work that she does to help plan this actual community event. And then the other members of the committee plan other aspects, receiving sponsorships, making sure the fireworks are in order, the police and the volunteer, um, police individuals to support the parking and all, and the safety. Um, and so the library continues its participation because I think it is just a great collaboration across the village.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks, Jill.
Any other questions? Last, very, almost last item, um, trust the email correspondence and open meetings act.
I just wanna share a few reminders of what Adam shared in our financial one-on-one training. Um, BCC is your friend, and I would say that that, use that in all of your email communication to other committees, committee members, if you're planning committee, um, meetings or agenda, you're looking for agenda topics, use BCC. When you don't BCC, it may trigger the open meetings act. And, um, then it may, we may be in violation of that, and so I'm not worried about this at all, this is just us getting the training and then working towards compliance, and so it's, you know, natural for there to be, need to be reminders, and so, um, I saw a couple of opportunities just to redirect communication in a way that supports OMA. Um, and so I wanted to share that with all of you, I wasn't able to put that handout together, that little cheat sheet that I was talking to you about, about, you know, here are some like the top five ways you can support OMA with your email, but I still would like to do that for you all, um, just as a way to keep it um, fresh and up to date. Um, and if you're interested, again, the recording of the training with Ansel Glink and Adam is on our YouTube page with our board meeting recordings, so you're welcome to watch that again at any time. Um, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about OMA and FOIA and any other acronym that relates to Illinois statute law. Um, I may not know it, but I know that our lawyer will be able to help us answer the question, so thank you all.
Thanks Renee. Okay, I'm making for motion to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor say state aye. We adjourned at nine oh two.